Good evening, everyone. Welcome to your beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is Grand Forks City Council's Community of the Hall for Monday, April 25th, under Item 1, Call to Order 1.1. Welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Veen. We have a quorum.
Great. Under Items 2, Discussion Items 2.1, Review Special Event Request for La Quintina Car and Bike Nights. We have approved this same concept multiple years in the past when this was El Rocko. Does anybody have any questions? Move by Weigel. Is there a second? Second by Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.2, City Hall Renovation Project 8518 Award Bid for HVAC. Mr. Moslou.
All right. Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. What you have in front of you is City Hall HVAC project. It's the Phase 1. Beginning of the budget year, you guys approved Fund 2121, the capital fund for general fund buildings. What we did is, in late 2021, we did an assessment of all city general funded buildings, so fire stations, city hall, police station. When we went through that, we've identified in City Hall, we had a whole bunch of issues with HVAC. So we went in through the HVAC and we prioritized it. Boiler is our priority, number one. Worked with EAPC, budgeted for $600,000, it came back $347 and some change. You'll see that my recommendation is not to approve the bid with the alternate. We have a bunch more sealants that we have to do, so I want to do that at a later time. It'll be a much larger project with plenum sealants and things of that nature.
Thank you, Mr. Moslou. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Weber?
Quick question. Will this upgrade do anything for air exchange, air filtration?
As the phases go, absolutely. So it's, I would imagine, we're going to go through probably five phases through the next two years of HVAC. The next step, well, those are the first step. Next step is going to be the controls, and then we'll start getting into the fan units and things of that nature. But this goes all the way back to, prior to me starting, when you had John's Controls come in and do their assessment as well. So this is just the beginning of it.
So energy efficiencies, cost savings.
Absolutely.
And improved air filtration.
Yep. All the, I don't have the ROI report in front of me.
Right.
But EAPC has been running all that stuff when they're looking at what we're replacing and going with, you know, top of the line, energy efficient equipment.
And so if you're wanting us to not approve this, what do we do in terms of a motion tonight? Do we move to not approve that?
No, we move to approve the base bid.
And then vote against it.
No, I would like you to approve it. We're just not approving the alternate.
Right.
So we're approving a little bit without the alternate.
I'll move. Thanks. Great. Motion by Weber. Is there a second by Mock? Any other comments? Hearing none.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Moslou. Item 2.3, Task Order Agreement for Project 8194, El Monte Force Main Reliever. Mr. Grasser.
Okay, this is for Engineering Services. Some of you may have seen in times in the past where you've got like blocks and blocks of plastic pipe running down the street or through an alley and over and around. Those are put in when they need to do work on lift stations, they need to bypass the sewage flow. And so, again, you'll see that we've been making progress over the years trying to bury some of those things so that we don't have to lay that pipe out every time someone needs to work on a lift station. This is really another segment of that. It's the lift station down at Belmont, the lower area down there on Belmont Road connecting it to a lift station on El Monte. There's a drawing in the staff report. But really, it's connecting those two lift stations together for a bypass for future anticipated work that we know is coming. The thing that's unique about this one is we are going to try to tie into an old abandoned water main, is 18-inch water main abandoned. So we're going to try to tie the lift station into that and utilize that pipe, save quite a bit of money. This is part of this, is installing some pipe, testing some pipe, and making, just making all that plumbing work. So this is the engineering component to that.
Well, thanks, Mr. Grasser. Exciting stuff. Any comments or questions? Move or approval? Move by Cavami. Is there a second? Second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Item 2.4, Bid Award for Project 8400, District 760, reconstruct Oak Street from 17th to 24th Avenue South. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, President Sandy, committee members. Again, this is our project to reconstruct seven blocks of Oak Street. It's currently asphalt, and we're going to propose to reconstruct it with concrete. And we held a bid opening and opened bids last week Thursday. We received two bids. The low bid was a little over 13% under the engineer's estimate, which at this time of the bidding year really surprised us in a very pleasing way. So with that, we are recommending award to Stratocorporation in the amount listed in the staff report.
Great. Thank you. Move by Weber. Second by Weigel. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.5, Award Bid Project 8407, 8408, and 8409, Districts 582, 353, and 583. Sanitary Sewer Water Main Storm Sewer for TK Industrial Park Development. Mr. Lieberman.
Thank you. Tonight, this item is really informational. It's currently out for bid, and we will have a bid opening this week Thursday, so we're requesting to bring that bid directly to council next Monday. It saves us two weeks in the construction period, gives us, extends our construction season a couple of weeks, so.
Are there any objections to that? Move or approval? Move by Cavami. Second by Veen. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.6, Bid Award for Project 8509, Beacon Water Main Relocation. Mr. Lieberman.
Thank you again. This project is in the exact same situation as the previous one. We have a bid opening scheduled for this Thursday. We'll update the staff report and bring that information directly to council next Monday, if that's acceptable.
Mr. Cavami, questions or motion? Motion by Cavami. Second by Veen. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.7, 2022, thanks, Mr. Lieberman. DWS Revolving Funding Resolution of Governing Body of Applicant for Waterline Expansion Project. DWSRF funding. Ms. Parvee.
Good evening. Good evening. This is the resolution to allow us to apply for the funding for that water main, I'm sorry, waterline expansion in the north end that we've been talking about that'll service residents in that area businesses as well as the Fufang site.
Great. So this is our agreement that we're doing, right?
Basically, the resolution says that you approve that we apply.
Great. Any comments? Concerns? Questions? Weigel moves approval. Is there a second? Second by Cavami. Hearing no comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Ms. Parvee. 2.8, Award Bid for Project 8512, Public Works Operations Brush and Tree Chipping. Ms. Lipsch, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, council members. I'm here to present the bids that were received for the landfill chipping. We received three bids ranging from $39.25 a ton all the way up to $105 a ton. So we are requesting that you bid, award the bid to Burbel Recycling, doing business as H&amp;T Trucking in the amount of $39.25 per ton.
Any comments or questions? Move by Mock. Second by Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least, item 2.9, Residential Development Policy Discussion. Mr. Storsted, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So as you read through the staff report, I tried to summarize the past couple of weeks that led to the deferral discussion tonight. Two weeks ago, if you remember, Mr. Brooks presented regarding residential development and land use plan. Last week, you did approve two changes in the form of markup rate down from 1.5% on special assessment projects down to 1/2% and the miscellaneous charge from 4% to 2%. City council wanted to further discussion on a deferral program for residential development for Greenfield. What I tried to put together for you, and some of the discussion was between a three- and five-year deferral. So I tried to highlight for you some information. First of all, put a timeline together for you in that staff report when we're talking about a three-year deferral. Effectively, it really becomes a five-year deferral for the developer. So I tried to break that down for you. A project, for instance, that's eligible in 2022 would be ready for certification at the earliest 2023, possibly 2024. That then would get deferred for three years. The deferral date would start with the date of certification. And so that would bring you out to about '26 or '27, and then ultimately would be payable then in the year 2027 or 2028. So that should kind of give you an idea of a timeline when we're talking deferrals. So as far as a term, I know in looking at that timeline, I did reach out to our municipal advisor, Baker Tilly, as well as Bon Council Dorsey. I did remember some discussion about the three-year, past three years gets to be a bit of a challenge, and the reason for that is we can only capitalize interest for three years. And then beyond that point, so we can do it for longer, we just can't capitalize that interest. So we'd have to find a different way to fund those payments. So anyway, in looking at that, we took a look. We did also, in the past, it came with also, and I think this just needs a little further discussion, as I know it's a concern with some developers, is a line of credit, or a letter of credit. So I think that piece of it, we'd want to have a little more discussion to bring back. There is a draft ordinance attached based on some of these recommendations for deferral program. I'm going to let Ryan, Mr. Brooks, speak a little bit more as well, and then we can come back to this discussion.
Mr. Brooks?
Good evening. Thank you. I'll, I have a quick presentation. I'm just going to hit on some of the items that we had last time. So if you can just give me a second to set up here. So I was just going to hit on a few of the items that we had last time, just to update you on the residential development again, where we sit. Here's the 2050 Land Use Plan map, and talking a little bit about some of the areas that we have coming up. There's kind of three growth areas of residential that we have. We have down here, just west of Washington, south of 62nd. We continue to fill in the Discovery School area here, just north of 47th, and probably continue to expand further south of 47th into the future. The last one is up here would be what we call the West Walmart area, and we're going to be having some discussion with some developers here in the coming weeks, actually, in that area as well. One of the things that we want to discuss is some of the available lots that we have available to us. So this graph that you see in front of you here, some of the areas in green, they're available for building, they're lots that are available. In the yellow, they're platted, but do not yet have infrastructure into those areas. And right now, we're looking at roughly 480 platted lots for single family. And if you can remember, that's about a three- to four-year supply. And as we start to look into developing new areas, we're looking at at least two years to bring some of those areas online. So when we got into some of those situations back in the past, 2016, some of the things that we did, there were four different areas that we looked at in terms of helping drive some of those new lots. The first two areas were permanent changes. We adjusted special assessment period from 20 to 25 years. We decreased special assessment interest markup from 1.5 to 1. Some of the two, number three and number four, those were things that we did temporarily. We eliminated the upfront bonding requirement. When we did that originally, that was expired in 2018, at the end of 2018. The other thing was to defer special assessments. We did that three-year period. That expired in 2019. So that's number three and number four we're kind of coming back again with. So this is a map that depicts some of the areas that utilized the lots using deferrals. Here's South Washington. It's kind of the Kingsview area here, and then the Carrery area really expanded and actually developed. I don't know if everybody's been down into that area, but it's filled in very fast. Prairie Woods, pretty much complete. Those are a little bit bigger lots, 80-plus feet in width. That area has developed up very quickly. And then down south at Discovery as well, that area is filling in. Here's, this depicts our lots, so the single-family permits that we've had each year, that's the blue line that comes across. We're always a little over, typically, I say about 100 lots. We've had areas, times that we were above that, and townhomes are in green. We had one area that really bumped up. But here's that supply. So as you started to look at some of the supply of lots, these areas were areas that really kind of came in with the lot deferral. And that was quickly just hitting on some of those. So with that, I'll turn it back to Marv.
Thank you, Ryan. And I did want to just point out a couple more things. When you look at the, there is a draft ordinance attached with there as well as previous ordinances from the previous deferral program. I do want to, in the staff report, just make one correction to reflect. We would be looking at single-family and townhome residential lots, I believe. I put in there R1 and R4. That should be R1 and R2. So that's just a minor correction there. And then Mr. Gostad did draft an ordinance for you to consider and open to revisions, but that's a beginning draft with our recommendation. What we have on there then is that this would be eligible going forward for projects once that ordinance is approved. And what we've got on the draft, there is an end date certification of October 31st, 2026, which is certifications are due each year by October 31st.
Council President Sandy, I think if, I asked Mike Corman's here from CPS, and he works with a lot of the development community, and so since he's here this evening, I asked if he could come up and kind of share what, from a development perspective, on, you know, whether this will move the needle or what more we need to do to, since he helps support a lot of the developers in town.
Mr. Corman? Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. Glad to be here tonight. I'm just here tonight to just express my support of this policy and also commend city staff and all of you folks for looking at this policy. It's a very similar policy that was done several years back that was very, very instrumental in getting the inventory that we currently have for single-family lots out there. There's a lot of exciting things going on here in Grand Forks with new developments that are going to promote growth to the city, jobs, people, and I think it's very important that we have housing for all these people. And obviously, you all know that as well. We've been working with developments in Grand Forks for the last 40-plus years, and so, you know, we know most of the developers and a lot of the issues. And I did have discussions with our clients about this, and they are also very supportive of this policy. It does a number of things. It allows for larger tracts of land to be brought in. So the infrastructure, you have larger projects. And so with that, you also have better bid prices typically because it's basically the economy of a scale. With that, too, you have larger tracts, also you annex more land in as well. And that kind of helps with the specials. Now, this would be a deferment for three years, but that's pretty short-term when you look at the bigger picture with this. I guess with that, I guess I'd open any questions you might have on the developer side. We do have Adam Carrery here as well, if you have any questions for the developer. But like I said, everybody I've talked to is very supportive of this, and I think it would really, really go a long ways to help provide solutions to our upcoming, what we project as a housing shortage.
Thank you, Mr. Corman. Appreciate that input. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Corman? Mr. Weber? Certainly.
These are really complicated issues, and the economic future of our city hangs on how to best address this. We can anticipate ongoing need for additional housing for many years to come. One of the factors that I've always understood is the lack of tradespeople in our community, and this isn't going to be able to address that. But one thing, I'm seeing a slide here, we currently have 480 platted lots, and we still need infrastructure for those. Is there something that the city can do to provide that infrastructure in a more timely way? And would that help development, or am I not understanding the equation here?
Yeah, of those 480, not all, some of those are, the yellow is what doesn't have infrastructure. I would anticipate some of these getting infrastructure if this is passed, so it's just the guy.
So I misunderstood the slide, haven't I? It doesn't mean that there's 480 plots waiting for infrastructure.
Right. There's 480, but some of them are platted and ready with infrastructure. Some are not.
Okay.
So I think the deferral program will help, you know, in terms of the trades, I think that'll just help, you know, finance some of those. I think you're going to see potentially some of those trades having to come from outside the area. That's potential, and that's happened over the last couple of years.
Oh, we are seeing an increase in tradespeople in town?
Yeah, I think there are some trades that are coming from Fargo, potentially, as part of this program, so.
And our partnership with the school district, with the CIA, we're hoping that it's going, that's going to take a few years.
We want to grow that in terms of our internal, how many we have in the, in Grand Forks.
The proposal for deferrals, and that's whether I develop one lot or 100 lots? Is that the current proposal?
Council member Weber, we did not place a limit or a limitation. You know, typically, we always talk about developers doing 10 to 25 lots. That was, you know, prior to that 2016 time, and how do we get them to be developing 50 to 100-plus lots? And I think we were successful in all these developments to do that. We did not set limits in that vein. I think the developers just went ahead and did that, but it would be within your purview and subject to Mr. Gostad's opinion, but to set some limitations like, you know, for example, at least 35, or 50, or 75. I think you could do that. Obviously, Mr. Corman's here, and he'd be able to, you know, kind of test that, what the right number is, but you could certainly set at least a goal of, this is the goal. So when we come bring back developments, you could at least say, our goal is X, and so when they bring back developments, Mr. Brooks is going to say, this is going to be part of the deferral program. And he says they're going to bring in X amount of lots, which means it's the goal that you have prescribed as part of the policy. I think would be appropriate.
Very good. So you're saying limits, but minimums, that there would be, deferrals would be made available if developers develop 75 lots at a time. What are your thoughts on that, sir? And Mr. Gostad as well?
Yeah, so, council member Weber, kind of what we're dealing with right now is, we're kind of at the end of the infrastructure that the city has developed, like right after the flood. And so we're looking at areas that we have to bring in sanitary lift stations and more of those trunk line infrastructure. And so in order to make this work, it's, I think the developers have a clear message that they have to bring in larger tracts of land to get it annexed, so the city investment for, say, a lift station is worth their while, so you're not bringing in 20 lots, you're bringing in 100 lots, something like that. And to do that, obviously, we need some help. I say we, the developers, need help to help the financing part of it, and that's what this policy does.
Right. And I don't want to penalize smaller developers. We need as much competition as we can get, but if the purpose of a program like this is to encourage rapid development, it seems that there would be value in having these minimums. Is that legal?
I don't see any reason why you couldn't. In fact, the last time you did it, there was no limitations at all. So I don't see an issue with that, placing a minimum, but I think what Mr. Corman is expressing is that the market kind of takes care of itself as well.
There are some of the areas, too, like, that ones that were shaded in yellow, they're basically platted and they're ready to go, but the infrastructure hasn't been put in. So those might be some smaller ones that you'd be looking at, you know, not these bigger tracts, because there's just, you know, so many lots there. For instance, I had a discussion with the developer that owns the 41st Avenue South cul-de-sac over in Edgewood Edition, so that's south of 40th and east of South 19th Street. Anyway, talking about this policy, he's pretty excited about it. He said with this, he'd probably bring this development in probably a year or two earlier than what he normally would if this policy goes through.
And how many is he, how many lots is he talking about?
Horrible. It's been a couple of years since we did that plat. I think it's probably around 40.
And if the deferral gave him an incentive to do 50 instead of 40, or 60?
Well, for instance, 41st, the street's only so long, and so the plat's there, so you can't really add any more than, say, the number's 40, you can't really do any more than that.
Mr. Grasser, something to add?
If I may butt in, just to say, the reason, one of the reasons I think you don't want to put limits or numerical maximum-minimums on these is this can work for those smaller, I'm going to call somewhat infill areas. We talked about that cul-de-sac, the yellow one, and there may be smaller pockets that people are able to find and develop in town that will work for that, but it's also then also available for when you cross into newly developed areas that you need to get that economy of scale. So I think this program allows both of those things, all of those things to succeed, so it can be infill somewhat and also the external growth.
I don't mean to be overly cynical, maybe a little bit. We're talking about, oh, the market will take care of this, but now we're, at the same time, we're saying we're going to develop city government-based incentives to encourage it. Talking out of both sides of our mouth there a little bit, but I think I understand what you're saying about the minimums. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Weber. Can I ask one question first, Mr. Corman? Mr. Storsted, why can't we capitalize interest longer than three years? Is that city policy? Or is there some accounting law that says we can't?
It's a federal tax law regulation, so I didn't get any more information than that. Just, so you aren't allowed to go over three years.
Capitalizing it. We can, we could capitalize the interest up to three years.
And we could use, if the deferral goes out, we could bring in another funding source, for instance, and we could still, I suppose, charge in special assessment interest accrued in that time period, but we can't capitalize as part of the bond sale, as part of the bond mechanism. We cannot capitalize more than three years.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Cavami?
Thank you. That was one of my questions, so that's fair. Appreciate that. You know, personally, I think that I'd like this to be something that's accessible from a developer for one lot to 100 lots. You know, I think that if we're going to do something, I'd hate to create a program that someone aspiring to start their own business and saves up and buys a lot and wants to do something and then doesn't have the ability to access the program. So I like that there's no limits, whether at the bottom or the top. I think that that makes a lot of sense. Looking at when projects are eligible, and I think my question is that when you certify the project, your example is 23, 24, and I think you're showing that it's the August of 23 is when you would need the numbers final. I guess, could you walk me through that? Why would a project be 23 or 24, and what controls that?
Sure. So when we, we need to have substantially complete numbers by August to get it certified for that year and with the county for that October 31st deadline. So if a project starts in '22, it just takes that, usually, it's going to be either the fall of 2023 or 2024 before it's substantially complete.
And so that's not just bid numbers? It's, project is done and you expect your contingency? Okay, all right. or, okay, all right, that makes a lot more sense, I appreciate that. Looking at the things that we did before to incentivize, is there a mechanism that we can use to prevent any of these issues where the homeowner doesn't know there's a special assessment pending?
Councilman Cavani, members of the committee, I really, I don't know what more we could do, I think we'll continue, I believe we did everything we could, it was, you know, attached with the record at the county, and we'll continue to do that, we'll continue to send out letters to the residents each year as it progresses for the three-year deferral, we'll continue to get information out to the realtors. It's unfortunate, but sometimes things fall through the cracks in communication between that and the ultimate home buyer, but I think we do everything we can do, but we'll continue to try to do anything and everything we can to try to mitigate that, so.
So, looking at what we're doing, it's very similar to what we offered before. I see that 50% upfront bonding, a letter of credit from the developers, so is that something that we're still keeping or we're not getting rid of?
So, that's something I think we need more discussion on, and we'll probably come back with more information next Monday. You know, current policy is the 50% upfront or offer that bank letter of credit. You know, it came to our attention and discussion that that, you know, is tough to fund those letters of credit, so I want to get some more information on that, how much that costs, and get your input as well. You know, the purpose of it is to protect risk on the city side, but that has been a concern of the developer.
Makes sense, I'm just trying to understand, you know, if we're duplicating why certain things are left off or not left off, and if that's something that's still, we're still discussing, I know that a letter of credit is not an insignificant thing to secure. No further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Veen, comments?
Yeah, good question. How do the benefits like this for the developer translate to the homeowner in their purchase of their property or their house?
Councilman Vee, members of the committee, and others can chime in here too, but I think the thought behind it is that if you take some of that risk off the developer, they can bring in larger areas at one time, increasing the size of scale and hopefully reducing the ultimate cost, and bringing in, you know, more competition for, for bringing down the housing costs as much as possible for construction. But ultimately, the special assessment piece does accrue interest over that time, so there is an added cost on that side. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so, because, you know, it's certainly a benefit, I think, to get larger subdivisions going, I like that, but I just want to make sure the homeowner is getting some of that benefit, and how do we, and if we allow different developers to compete against each other, they'd all get the same, the same benefit, I guess, is what I see, so it hopefully does that, but I just want to make sure that the homeowner is also getting that, and it's not just the developer who comes out ahead.
Right, and I don't know what more you do, other than, there's no way to put exact limits on that, I don't think, but I think by helping with some of that upfront risk, you would hope that the size of scale helps offset and bring down some of that cost.
And most of the time, those developers sell the properties either privately, or do they develop themselves under their own housing, as a housing developer?
And that I would leave to the developers to answer that question, I think, but, you know, ultimately, I think the goal was stated to get more lots available in inventory, and I think that's really the underlying goal of what this program would be, is just get more lots available.
Mr. Cavani?
Is there a proposed sunset for this program?
Yeah, so what's written in that draft ordinance, and this is up for discussion, we did basically a three-year from that certification, that final certification period, so, or three years of the program. So really, the final certification year would be that year 2026, which then, you know, three years after that is the deferral, so projects completed by then.
Mr. Weber?
Yeah, this is just a discussion at this point, and so, President Sandy, some years ago, you co-chaired the Blue Ribbon Commission on Housing, and I think one of the, I think that the last deferral program was perhaps one of the recommendations that came out of that, but I think one of the great success stories of that dive into housing was the rapid expansion, the development of multifamily housing. We had maybe a few thousand units of apartments develop within a relatively short period of time, and one of the driving factors, I think, and I'm looking to you, of the Blue Ribbon Commission, was identifying how many, how much housing we needed, and kind of starting from that. This current proposal seems heavily, is heavily focused on single-family housing. Do we have a sense of where we're at? What are our current projected housing needs over the next five years? And how is that, what's the combination of multifamily and single-family?
And I'm gonna let Mr. Brooks answer that, but the previous deferral program was also for single-family and twin homes.
And for twin homes as well?
Yeah, I think we do need multifamilies, we need about 300 a year to come in, that's been our average over the last 10 years. The last time, I want to say in about 2016 or just before, it was during that last housing study, we had not, we weren't coming close to keeping up with that, and that's when we had that bubble, if you will, and then we had about 1,200 units that came in, and some of that came from outside the area, so we started getting folks that were not normal, normally in Grand Forks, starting to come in, that corrected the issue, if you will, and really had significant moving of the dial on the multifamily side. Single family's been relatively close to steady in that 100 lots, and we, for whatever reason, have had to look to try to do some other things. We haven't, since in the last three years, we started having some Fargo developers come in and start to move some of the dial, but that's been on kind of a little bit different, they've been doing more smaller lots, if you will, the Thompson Homes, they've been doing, started pushing the edges in the 40-foot lot range, so they've been some of our smallest lots, and that's been helpful, but I think we still, for whatever reason, just haven't broken the mold in that 80 to 100-foot lot, those have been pretty steady, just haven't seen an increase in those.
And we'd like to see a combination of all of these, but the young people, young families that we want to attract, I think often multifamily housing is an easier, affordable option for them. What drove the rapid development of multifamily housing back at that time? Were there any incentives, or, there weren't?
No, no, there wasn't, no, we didn't provide any. Some of them, if they'd been redevelopment areas, we've done some TIFs in those areas, but that's, that's not really what drove that increase, it was areas really around university.
I think it was mostly communication by the city, talking about the lack of housing in our community, and putting together the Blue Ribbon Commission, I think, got a lot of the developers to recognize that there actually were lots of opportunities, which is why shortly thereafter is when all of a sudden all the apartment buildings started going up.
And so I'm not opposed to what's being proposed tonight, but it sounds like we need to do some of that as well. The economic development that we're anticipating is going to create, we need more workers, which means we need more housing, and single-family housing, 80, 80-foot lots, that's great, and there's a market for that, but we need a lot of the multifamily housing as well.
Mr. Weber, perhaps, perhaps we could engage Praxis, who did the studies and provided all the information related to the housing shortage for us, perhaps we could have them update that information. I think that would be, I don't know if the mayor wants to sponsor that.
Is Ms. Richards here? Do we still have the dashboard?
Yes, that's being updated by our office.
Yeah, but it's not getting, is it getting the kind of traffic that it was getting eight, seven, eight years ago?
I'll work with John and get some of the numbers, he'll, I think he knows the hits that we've been getting, but I know that's been utilized by a lot of people, but, you know, I think there's another push that we need to look at in terms of maybe updating some of the numbers that we had, and we can, we can certainly engage Mr. Schill in looking at doing that. And he did assist us with the land use plan as well, so he was pretty pivotal on that.
That'd be great. My questions aside, I'm not opposed to what's being proposed tonight, but I really like that idea as well.
Sure, absolutely.
Praxis, yep.
Mr. Cavani, did you have a comment?
I was just gonna state that all the projects that we have going on downtown, it seems like there's a mixed-use component to all of those that has apartments, and I think we've got a lot coming, I'm pretty excited for all that to come to fruition.
I think, yes, Ms. Ma.
So I think part of the incentive for the first round of this, and then revisiting, was to help drive the price point down. Did we notice, or how are we tracking if home prices were lowered at all? Is there, because I think to perhaps Mr. Veen's point, to make sure that it's going to the homeowners as well, did we have some sort of tracking for that?
I don't know how we could possibly track that, right, because we implemented the program, they brought in a bunch of lots, they priced them as they priced them, and off we went, so I don't know how you could say that this lot is now cheaper than that lot. I mean, there's a lot that goes into it too, because some of the, some of the people that took advantage paid in more of the infrastructure than others. Sometimes the lots were more expensive with fewer specials, sometimes they were less expensive with more specials, and so it, I don't know how you could actually track it. Maybe we should leave it to the developers to bring us their plan for tracking on their own.
Well, but there's, there's national housing scales, there's regional housing scales, how do we compare to those? I think those are some of the benchmarks that could be utilized, right?
So maybe as part of this, if we do move forward next week, we should try to implement some benchmarks, or identify things that we should be tracking as a city, and have administration track them for us. Mr. Brooks, something to add?
Wasn't that part of the dashboard?
No, we weren't tracking prices, but that does sound like something that we should engage Mr. Schill with, potentially on next steps with that.
Great. Ms. Ma, further comments? Going to what Mr. Veen said, I know that several years ago, when we implemented the first, the first deferral, I was pretty adamant that the deferral should end with the developers and should not be passed on to the homeowner, because we want, we want the homeowners to benefit the most, but we also want to incentivize the developers to bring in lots. And so I think some of the issues that we got into, not everyone, and I'm not blaming anyone, there were people that ended up finding out that they had significant special assessments that they hadn't been paying, and we could eliminate that by, for example, I don't know what trigger you would watch, whether it's a building permit or a certificate of occupancy, whenever, probably not the building permit, because you don't know, but when the certificate of occupancy is pulled, or is provided, the following year, the special assessments are become part of the home, the home cost, and so I think if we did that, although there are some that would get a half a year, or maybe, you know, even three-quarters of their first year in the home without having to pay the special assessments, they would know, because we would be telling them right then, come February, or whenever the, I don't know, when the county does it, they're going to be hit with the special assessments. I still believe we should do that. I believe we should track it, we should have a trigger, and as soon as possible, the special assessments should be assessed to the property owners. But that's just my opinion. Yeah, Ms. Thorsten?
Yeah, that's fine. Just to that, to that point, we do send letters out, so just so you know, when they're getting that annual letter, if it does change ownership, they do have the option if they want to prepay at that time, or start, you know, they could roll it into the mortgage if they want, and pay the specials at that time. It would get to be, I was speaking with my staff, and not sure administratively how to manage and track, to watch for that, I know what you're saying, but it may be a tough task to, I wouldn't want to miss one.
I'm confident our inspections department can get that done, I'm 100% confident that they can follow and track it, I'm confident. I'm gonna ask a different question. Flood special assessments, when, can, does anybody have any recollection of how we determined the flood special assessments, and how we have set future assessments for unannexed property?
Sure, I can maybe brief a little bit on that, and, you know, there is many different pieces to the flood protection project, and many different types of bonds, and part of that was three different phases of special assessment bonds, so when you do get annexed into the city, it's a combination of those three, and I believe it's 13 cents a square foot that you pay toward that, as all others had in the, in the city of Grand Forks. The thought process when that funding plan was put together was that, so we, you know, hopefully don't have to come back for a future special assessment district, and in that discussion, that money then, when you get annexed in, goes toward the capital maintenance of the flood protection system, so that goes into a capital project fund for future capital maintenance expenses to keep the system working.
By law, we can't, we can't assess a special assessment or force people to pay that special assessment until they're annexed into the city.
Correct.
Right. Mr. Gostad, can you, can you speak to annexation a little bit? There are, as most people know, also, there's all sorts of property that's inside our flood protection that hasn't been annexed into the city. We can't, we can't, we can't force those people to pay their flood special assessments today, correct?
That's correct.
And can, why is it, maybe this is an interesting, different question, why aren't we charging interest on those special assessments? Because of course, for example, a $5 special assessment 20 years ago is a lot more expensive than a $5 special assessment today. Why aren't we charging interest? Why aren't we adding interest to those unannexed properties?
And I don't know that I can completely answer that question when it was set up, but we, maybe the thought process was when that does kick in, and they're paying interest over the term, the 20, 20 years as they're making payments, and they're making interest payments on those.
Sure, okay. Can you, Mr. Gostad, regarding annexations, if there's a, let's call it, I don't know, an area, let's call it an island, if there's an island that's currently surrounded by the city of Grand Forks, what does it take to get that island? For example, if there were a chunk of land, I don't know, 15 acres-ish, like by the corner of 17th Avenue South and 42nd Street, that was surrounded by the city of Grand Forks, it had corporate headquarters across the street, a bank, Menards, within a, within a five iron. We're talking about incentivizing developers to bring lots in when there are, there's all sorts of land currently inside the city limits that we haven't annexed. What would it take, for example, to annex that piece of property in order to move the needle on our housing issues?
There's two ways to annex, one is petitioning by the landowners, and I assume that's not what you're talking about. The second would be by resolution to the city council, and you could go forward with that, and you'd set up protest period, and I believe if more than 25% or more of the geographic area within that annexed area protest, then there's a process that you've got to go through. Ultimately, I think it starts with mediation, and if that doesn't, isn't successful, then there is an administrative process with an administrative law judge that goes through that annexation process.
We've been talking about islands, and we have done, and I'll credit Mr. Gangler and Mr. Brooks did a very good job working with some of the folks that were on, in those islands, but we still have significant islands within our community that should be annexed into the city, because they essentially are getting all of the services of the city without having to pay their flood specials and all of the other infrastructure. Mr. Gostad, what does it, what does it take to start that process of annexing, for example, an island on 17th Avenue South and 42nd Street?
Well, I, you've got this unwritten policy that you started planning and zoning first, and have them review it, and then they can make a recommendation to the city council, but it's ultimately the city council resolution that starts that process.
I, for one, think we should start, we're having a housing issue in our community, we know based upon our 2050 land use plan, there are residential islands within our community. If we're going to be incentivizing, shouldn't we be incentivizing people to bring their property into the city limits? Mr. Veen, comment? Well, just, I think we have that unwritten policy right now, right? Isn't that been, what we've been thinking for years now, is that we're gonna bring those in, every time we have an annexation, we, we've talked about it, right?
We, we've talked about it, right? Just haven't done it.
Yeah, I think so. We just haven't done it. So I, I, I think we should, as a, as a council, I think we should, I don't know, I don't think we're prepared to vote on it tonight, because it wasn't part of the agenda, but I think suggesting that our city administration bring something like that forward would be a good idea. Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy, as you recall, when Mr. Gangler was here and Mr. Brooks tag teaming, you know, we would show you maps of here are the islands, because I think a lot of times, Council President Sandy, you, you wanted to know that. I think we have to go to the next step then. And I think, obviously, we've been involved in a lot of activity, so just so you know, it takes a lot of, it's going to take a lot of wherewithal to go down, down this road, but I, I certainly, we're working in that Highway 81 corridor in the Fu Fang area, and we're looking to address that. And obviously, the city council has been looking at that for the last 40 years, and so we're trying to tackle that right now, so that we don't have to leave that for the next 40 years. And so I think what I'd ask Mr. Brooks, with a general consensus of this city council, is to put together that map again of where are these islands that ought to be considered, at least considered for annexation inside the city. Have him bring that up as an action item or consideration item at planning and zoning, have them provide a recommendation to the next city council meeting, and I, I would ask him, I know there's a planning and zoning meeting in, on next week, I'd ask him to bring that in June, and then you'd, you'd have that in, in your review in June. And probably comes at a good time, because obviously, we had that Highway 81 North area, including Fu Fang, that we're going to be working through in April, May, and then that first meeting in June, it'd be good to get that process going on the heels of, of that annexation that we're trying to create everybody in a comparable and reasonable way. If that makes sense, that, that would be the timeline we would do to bring it forward.
Works, Mr. Veen?
Well, I, I would just add, a lot of those infill properties already have major infrastructure all around them. When you go to the outskirts, you've got to extend it, but here you have that already. It should be the easiest properties to develop is infill.
And I, I would venture that if we, if we took a stand that we, we want to move this forward, that perhaps would incentivize some of our, our local developers to go in and buy, buy those properties, because we're going to be giving them a, a three-year special assessment deferral. So there might be opportunities just by, hopefully, we don't actually have to go through the process, which certainly would be the best. Yes, Ms. Ma.
Do you know how the land use plan assumed for those islands? Did it account for that?
Yeah, that, that was discussed as part of that, so this is consistent with what we were looking at, so.
So.
Council President Sandy, one more thing, sir. I think we could do something similar. We know the flood protection specials are the biggest hurdle on annexation, but you know what we've done most recently of recommending that 30-year term instead of the 20-year term? We could offer the same thing as part of this annexation, annexation, too, because that's been the biggest rub for folks, all those, all those flood specials are going to come in, we could offer the same opportunity for these developments. If you're good with us kind of portraying it that way.
Yeah. And don't, don't we have the annexation rating system that we could do for every one of those, too, that would be a part of the process?
Yep. We would do the same thing. It gives us some time, so when Mr. Brooks brings it in, he could say, these are all the evaluated areas that are above the bar for what we think administratively should be seriously considered, and so we wouldn't just shotgun it, we'd say, here are the ones that are over the bar, here's the map.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Talk about infill development, right?
So what, what do we want to do about the special deferral, and does anyone actually want to go on record with a motion regarding what we've been discussing tonight? Moving the 4% to 2%?
Is it a discussion item, or can we take action on it?
Yeah, we can take action on it tonight, certainly.
I think Marine has a recommendation in our staff report right now. The one, I would say the one, except we have a three-year that we're seeing is functionally probably a five-year.
The one thing maybe, I think Marine said, we will bring back that letter of credit issue that came, it came up today, is that, hey, if we don't include that, so we're going to weigh that, so maybe just a general consensus of, it seems like there's a general mood to consider that, similar to what we did in, in 2016. So right now, we'll, we'll consider that. If you want to include that as part of the motion, we can do some further research on that and make a final determination next, next week, Monday.
So I would move approval of the recommendation for the development policy changes and ordinance with the recommendation of exploring further needs of the 50% upfront bonding need.
Is there a second, second by Veen? Is there further comment? Is there any discussion about wanting to have the special assessment deferral and, at the time of certificate of occupancy or anything related to that?
Could we modify that amendment to say that we'd look at that?
Absolutely. Is that, is that okay with you, Mr. Veen?
Just look at it.
Yep, yep, just look at it, great. See what administratively it would take to do that.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding, so the way the ordinance is written, it would go away after, unless you brought it back, so is that what you're confirming? Okay.
Any other comments? Great discussion, everybody. There's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Before we, before we adjourn for the evening, Mr. Phelan, can you talk to us about water and, and the groundwater? We're blessed with a wonderful flood protection system to protect us from rising river water, but can you give us a quick briefing on, on where we're at with groundwater?
Council President Sandy, Council Member Weber, I have my colleague Al Grasser, too, can join me. So we had a rapid snowmelt with, I think, two to three inches of rain in our community, so it was a pretty extraordinary weekend, and I think we should be so pleased and happy that we have the flood protection system. Otherwise, we would be doing a lot of things that the City of Kirkston is doing with, you know, sandbagging, temporary pumps, all those things, and so really what you have is a public works, water works type system with, with 12 pump stations, with closures, that we can, we can maintain. Our, one of our bigger challenges, and we saw this in that those large rains in 2019, in particular in the Vale Circle area, is that there are sanitary sewer areas in the city that get inundated water, whether that's sump pumps, whether it's, you know, cracks in their, their sanitary sewer service, because they're in older areas, or sometimes we have clay pipes from what I understand, these older areas with sanitary sewer, so there's cracks, so there's water that goes in it. So in those areas in particular, and like during this last weekend event, you know, God bless our wastewater, stormwater crews. If you, you know what's really humbling in the City of Grand Forks? Working with those crews and all that they do 24/7 to make sure nothing bad happens. Once again this weekend, thank you, thank you, thank you about all that they do, and, and I've been able to work with those guys for, you know, over 20 years, and it's really the most humbling part of this job here. But in the areas, I mean, I kind of highlighted that, you know, if you look at Simonsons, former Simonson Lumber, now the Lumber Exchange Building, there's a wastewater pump station there that's kind of serving that older area of town on the north end. And if you go down further down Reeves and El Monte, there's, there's a wastewater pump station that serves that area along the river, and then finally, our beloved 15th and Dahl Mile, Maryland Hagerdy Station. Those are the areas where we get a lot of inflow in those areas for all of, of those three variety of areas that we do, and so I think that's where a lot of our inflow comes in, and that's where a lot of the babysitting we do in those areas with those pump stations. And thankfully, in that Vale Circle area, we were able to do well in that area, the storm station worked well, hopefully we'll make some further improvements in those areas. But those are areas that Al and I talked along with Melanie Parby, our Water Works Director. We should probably go, we've done, we did a lot of work after the flood, inspecting, televising, and then lining those sanitary sewer lines, and they're only going to be so big, you know, we're not going to rip up everyone's street and put in new sewer lines, you know, it kind of is what it is at this point. But it, we're probably about time to go back, do some more televising, more inspecting, and perhaps we need to do some lining in that area, and we've done a lot of that post-flood. We haven't done as much of that now. Then the other part is those, the service connections that all those homes have, how do we deal with all those individual service connections, too, and as they get aged and all those sorts of things, because that's the property owner's responsibility. But I'm just saying, in those areas, those pump stations are, are always challenged under large rain events, and so we were dealing with, some pumps, we're pumping like crazy, some of those in those old areas are probably plumbed to the, to the sanitary sewer system. And so we, whenever there's a large rain in those pump stations, they go pretty high, pretty quickly in those areas, and so we really have to do a lot of monitoring in those. So that's, that was our biggest challenge over the weekend, is that we didn't want any property damage regarding sewer backup. Certainly, people I'm sure have property damage due to seepage in, from the water. The water table is really high right now, which impacts our sanitary sewer system, impacts your service, but it also impacts any crack you have in your foundation where, sadly, I'm sure some people over the weekend who have finished basements had some damage, but that was due to water seeping into their basement, wasn't for sanitary sewer. We wanted to make sure over this weekend that there was no sewer backup, and we were able to accomplish that, thanks to our crews.
What, what can we do to support the, the city in those efforts? You mentioned sump pump. We did a couple of years ago, allow people to drain into their, their in-house systems so that the pipes aren't freezing outside, but it is warming up tomorrow and the rest of the week, so we want to make sure that we're draining outside, because the groundwater continues to rise, or I'm guessing, do we know what, what we're going to expect with the groundwater? Is it going to continue to rise? And what other things can we as, as homeowners, citizens of Grand Forks do to help here?
I think, no, we do have some, many homeowners, I think Dan Hanson of our Water Works Department, there's 100-plus that have permits to do that. We notify them, hey, got to make sure it's that time of the year to get out, and, you know, Mr. Sandy we talked about. So we do all those sorts of things, we do the public notices, you know, make sure you get your, your sump pump out of the, out of the sanitary sewer. So we need to continue to do all those things, and we are doing those things, and we just need citizens, like they always do, they really respond, you know. Some of them, when we had, you know, drought challenges with our water plant, or water supply, when we were up to 16, 17 million gallons a day, people really curped. We're doing the opposite now, whatever you can do, especially in those three areas that I just described, and I know nobody really knows where their sanitary sewer district is, but if you're along those areas, whatever you can do to, maybe if you don't have to elect to use water, like, you know, we, we suggested, if you don't have to wash clothes on Saturday, that really would help. Anything that will go down the sanitary sewer system helped a lot. But everything is back to, into normal ranges. All the, all the pumps or flood stations are closed, so the gates are down, meaning that anything that, if we had a large rain event, if we had lots of, you know, runoff, that means those flood stations along the river have to pump the water over the river, and they can't naturally go by gravity into the river. So that's the important piece, that we don't want to have challenges and flood from within. And so those are all the things that our, our wastewater, stormwater crews are monitoring right now to make sure that everything runs well. And the other thing you should know, we have really great operators to get out there and make sure everything runs fine. You guys have invested over the years in a lot of intelligence in our system, so we have alarm systems, we have supervisory systems, so that are, are electronic, so we really have a really good system, whether it's in our stormwater system, in our wastewater or flood systems, that we can monitor from trucks, from laptops, from iPads. We've got a lot of investment that you have done, and it really pays off on weekends like this past weekend.
Thanks.
And Al, anything further to add, given the general, the general flood response over the weekend?
Thank you. I'm probably going to skip a lot of the flood discussions. Todd did a great job. I would like to emphasize on your residents is what you can do to help yourself and to help the city. Make sure that you get, your, your gutters are operating, you know, get the leaves out so they can collect the water off the roof, get your downspouts out to get that, the goal is to get the water away from the foundation. And, and, and all the homes, you know, over time, the, the dirt settles next to the foundation, either the dirt or sometimes the concrete, you can't do too much about that right now, but long-term, make sure that, you know, that you can come back in the summertime and check your landscaping, make sure that everything flows away. Otherwise, the water comes down along and it creates a reservoir right next to your foundation, and that water then has to go down. Even if you have a sump pump, sometimes the water can't get to the sump pump quick enough before it starts to come through, you know, cracks in the walls and different things like that. So you want to make sure, you know, and, and that helps, that will help to minimize the amount of sump pump operation that's going on, it'll help eliminate, you know, minimize any kind of seepage that you have in your home. So just wanted to kind of mention on that, that's, the other one, we sometimes get phone calls, you know, that sometimes some great ideas in the past where, you know, let's put a, let's put a swale in a backyard and not necessarily have to, to put in storm sewer, we're going to save some money on storm sewer, right? Well, those things are still problematic. When you, you drain the water in the back through a swale unpaved, on storm sewered area, it's slow, they're going to hold a little water, they're going to take a while to drain, and, you know, that's part of what goes along with having that, those swales. Generally speaking, those kinds of things are pretty expensive to fix. I know we've had a couple of different comments come in on, on calls on things, and we've kind of forget after two years of drought that, you know, sometimes these things just operate that way. Especially now, the ground is froze, it's not able to soak into the ground, the trees aren't growing yet, the grass isn't growing yet, those things that would otherwise absorb that water, evapotranspiration, you know, get that water out of there, it's just sitting now. And so that situation will improve once the vegetation gets a chance to take off, too.
Thanks for all the good news, Mr. Grasser. Appreciate that. That's good. Mr. Veen?
Mr. Grasser, question for you. I know in the coming week, we're going to probably see the value of the permanent flood protection and how it's protecting the city, but this last weekend, I went out to see what the impacts of the English Cooley diversions were. And if you remember, in '79, we were flooded from the Cooley and had to put sandbags to keep the water from coming into town, and I guess my background is on the Cooley, and I couldn't believe how high it is, so I went out, looked at the original Cooley, the first English Cooley diversion, and the second English Cooley diversion, and they're all running pretty full. I can only imagine, having not had those, what would have happened to the western part of our city that people aren't even probably aware of, and the benefits that they received from the protection system, especially this last English Cooley diversion, this was, was very full as you went out and looked to the west.
Yeah, that was, yeah, I, I agree 100%. I looked at a lot of those areas. We would have had a lot of wet flooded areas in town without both of those. It's kind of scary to think about it. This, the, the precip that came down was about roughly around three inches, a little over three inches, but the fact that the ground was cold, sometimes froze, didn't have any vegetation growing, anything, it, it acted, we just had that discussion today with the weather service, it acted more like about a five or a six-inch summer storm, just hydrologically the way it, the way it ran off. I was shocked to see how quickly and, you know, the response in our legal drains and the English Cooley. We have some stuff that I'll talk about sometime at some point on the south end that I think we still need to address flood protection-wise, big-ticket stuff, but I'll, I'll save that for now. But looking at what happened, and we have another rain event coming in this weekend, so we'll hopefully keep most of that to the west, because everything is really full right now.
Best money spent in our community ever is our flood protection, no question. Any other comments for the good of the order?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Weber, second by Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. We're adjourned.